Welcome to the Selectman's meeting for February 23, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01. Rule call vote?
Cindy King is here.
Gordon Clark, present.
Carolyn Smart, present. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being video recorded and a member of the audience might also be doing some video and tape recording as well. 1.4 Chairman's additions and deletions. I don't have any. Was there anything that needed to be added?
I'll sit.
So we'll move on to 2.1. Review and discuss appointing Karen Chapman to the Nashua, Wild and Scenic River Study Committee as an alternate member. Any questions on that request?
None ma'am, Chair.
I believe we do have one regular member already appointed and this would be an alternate.
That's what I'm understanding, yes.
So if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion to appoint Karen Chapman to the Nashua, Wild and Scenic River Study Committee as an alternate member.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.1, open meeting law complaint update. Town administrator, do you want to just address that under your?
I'll take it now, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Open meeting law complaint update. There have been five open meeting law complaints over the past two months. Bless you. Over the past two months, copies of which are enclosed as a part of my report. While we've spent the time providing the board response to each in open session, we've never followed up and informed the public of the findings of the state. In four of the complaints, the state found that the Board of Selectmen did not violate the open meeting law, and in one of the complaints, it dismissed one half of the complaint and found that the Board violated the open meeting law on a technicality by not including enough detail in the agenda listing for an executive session. To point, the Board properly posted for the executive session but did not list enough detail. And there's no action required, that was just update for the public following on at home.
And Jim, I actually totaled up some of the invoices over the last few months since July for legal expenses, including the open meeting law complaints and a lot of the public records requests, and we're up over $7,400 in that. So I'm hoping we can, you know, do something different here. Maybe if folks have questions, talk to the town administrator. How much is that? $7,474. $7,400. And what's the total legal expenses? I think we budgeted thirty-five.
Thirty-five. I thought thirty-five to thirty-eight.
It could be thirty-five, yeah. How much have we spent total though?
Complete right now.
Yeah.
It's completely expended.
Oh, so thirty-five. Are we over or are we still within? Are we still?
Bless you. Next invoice will be over.
Will be over, okay. So, work session.
So can we have, since the legal bills are out there, are we over? Can we have a breakdown? I know we've asked for every legal bill and we received them up until November, but the December and Januaries, well, January's not out, but December 1 has been altered. Can we look at what the expenses are and what was paid on other issues in the town other than the public records request?
Madam Chair. Are you talking for the December bill or all bills?
For just in total of other, I would say if we're looking at the public records request as frivolous, what other frivolous expenses have we paid on legal bills?
Right. I don't know that I heard the word frivolous used.
Not the word frivolous, but it's saying, hopefully we can do something about it. We can just release them. And then we can look at truly what the legal expenses are paid, because from what my understanding is, there is a lot in the legal bill that has been paid by the town for investigations, et cetera, and a lot is on that December bill from what I understand that is not out.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
The December bill has not been released yet, but if you look at the agenda this evening, there is an executive session that has been called specifically to discuss that bill and determine.
Because I called the state.
I'm sorry?
Because I called the state.
No, actually, that's not the case, Steve. When the state called me after you called them, if we want to do this dance, I advised them at that time that it had already been scheduled and posted for that issue to be taken up this coming meeting this evening. So it wasn't as a result of what you did, but I was able to inform them.
Why did we have to go over the ten days?
I'm sorry?
Why did we have to go over the ten days?
Because the issue was being looked at by both council and by members of the Board that had an interest in looking at the bill to make certain that there was nothing that was privileged that would be released.
But every bill from January to November was released without an issue. Why December?
I can't speak to that. I wasn't here during those ones. I'm here now and this is what I know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I suspect it'll be released tonight, Steve, to alleviate your concerns. Okay. All right, so 4.1, town administrator updates and reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you look at the copy of my report that was enclosed in your packets and posted online, you'll see personnel updates. Number one, a health insurance. What we currently offer as employee healthcare insurance is an exceptionally rich benefit.
I'm sorry, I just feel passionate that I want to disclose that I am a town employee that's on health insurance. I will not participate in this conversation or saying any comments. Just want to make that clear. Yeah?
Just made a quick statement.
Sure.
My wife is a town employee and she's entitled to insurance, so I will not make any comments about this, but I have 110 percent faith in our new town administrator's abilities and knowledge to handle the situation.
I agree.
Thank you. What we currently offer as an employee healthcare insurance is an exceptionally rich benefit. The plan design in terms of copays and deductibles is extremely rich, and the percentage split between the town and the employees at 85 percent paid by town, 15 by employees, is also a split that is far more reflective of benefits 15 years ago than what you would see in the marketplace today. As intuition should tell you, this is obviously not inexpensive. To put it in perspective, the non-school general government budget, including our debt service, is roughly $8.7 million. Of that budget, 11.2 percent or 1.1 million is health insurance. If you exclude debt, the numbers fall to, excuse me, change to a full 14 percent of our budget on each one item. This requires immediate attention. Over the past couple of years, we have been hit with double-digit increases in the expense. This coming year, our carrier, MIA, has informed all accounts that the increases will range from 6.8 to 11.2 percent. This is unsustainable. In your packets, you should see a work plan put forth by NFP Insurance Consultants. I've reached out to NFP to analyze our health insurance offerings and to make recommendations moving forward. Toward that end, as procurement officer, I've put out a bid to solicit quotes from all major health insurance carriers with bids due back by the end of the month. So that'll be not only Blue Cross and Blue Shield, either as an independent or through MIA, but also Harvard Pilgrim, Tufts, Fallon, and any others that are in the municipal marketplace in Massachusetts. The, I recognize that there's a great deal of work involved in this initiative on both the labor side and in the marketplace, but we must do it. The status quo is no longer acceptable. So just to step back from that just for a moment, 85-15 obviously is an extraordinary benefit. When you look at the level of service we provide for plan design, we will be subjected to what's called the Cadillac Tax, which under the Affordable Care Act, the federal regulations, when you offer a plan like ours with the level of benefits that we provide, which is higher than the benchmark standard, you can do that as a public entity, but you'll pay a penalty. The penalty won't be cheap. So this is something that we need to do, and my belief is, my faith in the process is that at the bargaining table, people have to expect this, that this has been a benefit that has run probably longer than it should've, and it will need to be addressed. In terms of process, you would engage the Insurance Advisory Committee, which is a representation of each union group. They have one person that can sit at the table. The legislation that creates the IAC doesn't require, but I've always had as a matter of practice, one person sit at the table that is a non-union employee as well to represent the interests of those groups. You also have one retiree that is eligible to be there, but because we don't offer retiree health insurance, that's moot point for us. You can then have that discussion around the table with the IAC, and if you come to consensus with the IAC, they can bring it back to each of their respective groups. If there's support around a plan change, it can be the end of the story right there. You can then negotiate that with each individual group, having had that collective agreement, bring it back to the Board, which will be an issue for us. We'll need to figure out how that happens, given the issues that we have with the Board. My hope is that it'll be that easy. If on the chance it's not that easy, there's then the opportunity to accept a provision of Chapter 32B that would allow plan design to be implemented unilaterally. After all, best efforts made to negotiate plan design change. Management has the ability to implement change. It gets a little more complicated because instead of doing it with, you're doing it to. There's a requirement that any change that you make and any savings that result from that change, 25 percent of that saving goes back to the employee groups, which means if you know you have to save X dollars, you'd have to dig a little deeper in order to save X plus in order to be able to account for giving the 25 percent back across to the employees. So that's...
What would the 20, where would the 25 percent go? And when it goes back to the employees and what kind of package does that get to them in?
It can go to any number of things. It can go towards months of copay or contribution. So basically the holiday, you've probably heard them referred to as health insurance holidays, where the employees don't make a payment over a certain period of time. It can be in terms of an FSA, a flexible spending account, so...
Contribution to that.
People have this pre-tax amount of money available for copays and deductibles. So there are any number of ways that it can go back, but it's, again, it's an amount that is prescribed by statute that would have to go back across the table. So ideally, we don't get there. In my experience to date, I've never had to go there. It's always been something we've been able to do at the table through the IAC, and my hope would be that we'd be able to do the same here. Okay?
Thank you.
Certainly. Section 2, financial updates. The 16 and 17 working group. Now that the town accountant, Terry Walsh, is back in house, I'd like to arrange for the first meeting of this work group. I'm advised that Terry and our consulting treasurer-collector are set to have the 15 books closed. I'd hoped by this evening, I was advised in somewhat of a panic by Terry yesterday morning, that while they have cash reconciled and everything is squared away, she still has journal entries to make before they can effectively close, but she expects that that will be shortly. So now that that is done, or about to be done, the full-time treasurer-collector begins tomorrow morning, and she'll overlap with Suzanne, our consulting treasurer-collector, for a little bit until she comes up to speed, and that'll allow us as a group to focus on the acute issues of 16 and to begin 17 in earnest. So I did receive communication from the Finance Committee that Don Klein, the chair, has been the one tagged with either the long straw or the short straw, depending on how you look at it, to sit on this group. We get to have a member of the Board proper here. The last discussion we had on it, I think the minutes when I went back and looked, said that if it was going to be night times, then the chair would take it. If it was going to be days, it would be Cindy taking it. I don't know what Mr. Klein's position is in terms of days or nights. I believe when I talked to him last, he said that he'd be able to do days, his preference would be days, but I've not confirmed that. I don't know if any of you have had the chance to speak with Mr. Klein.
No, he's right here.
I would prefer days. I mean, I could do nights if I really had to, but I would prefer days.
And honestly, days would probably be better for Terry and you and... The treasurer. The new treasurer. Thank you. Bye, right. That's fine. You know I'm going to question everything anyway. So if you can have a more flexible schedule, because I'm really, it'd be tough for me to take the time off and work there. And I don't want to slow anything down, that's for sure.
All right. Moving to Section B then, under Finance Updates. The fiscal '16 Police Department budget. As we've begun analyzing '16 with a little bit more detail, I found this noteworthy. When I was doing research before applying for this interim opportunity, one of the things that I had paid particular attention to was some of the comments around the Police Department budget. There was a lot of discussion last summer and into the fall about concerns of over-expending in the Police Department budget and what controls were in place. There was transition that was taking place and whether or not the dollars are being watched. I know Selectman Clark in particular, who I will encourage not to speak about this issue, was one that had raised some concerns and red flags back at that point, back in the summer. So, as I've earlier reported, the '16 budget is not in very good shape at all. I've been advised by our town accountant that the budget presented in vote at annual town meeting back in May was never balanced, so we know that part of the story. Given the fact that it was not balanced to begin with, it's all the more concerning when you go to the next page to see. A few examples of problem areas that have been brought to light since my last report. In my short time here with you, there's been a great deal of discussion surrounding the Police Department. I've heard that concerns have been expressed in the community and even by members of the very Board, that the budget was in trouble and that spending was a problem. Interim Chief Barrio has done a thorough analysis of the budget and reports the following concerns to me. The first bullet. Overtime was apparently originally budgeted with the presumption that the, by the former chief, that training would be conducted by and large online through MPI online while officers were on duty. So basically, there's an online program available where you can do your trainings and the officers would be on duty on the computer doing the training, and if a call came, they'd run for the call, then they'd come back and try to pick up again. When interim Chief Demora arrived, he changed the practice and sent staff to the academy in West Boylston for training. While this is a good practice, it was not budgeted. So I don't fault Chief Demora philosophically for doing that, because it does make better sense to have the ability to be interacting with other members of law enforcement, but it wasn't accounted for in the budget. Overtime was apparently originally budgeted with the presumption by the former chief that shifts would be staffed with three officers, but when an officer called out, his or her shift would not be backfilled with overtime. When interim Chief Demora arrived, he changed that practice as well and directed that all shifts be run with three officers, and when necessary, to fill the third shift via overtime call-in. This too was not budgeted. On a much smaller scale but equally as indicative of budgetary problems within the department, interim Chief Barrio has discovered that we have been paying for a copier for over a year that was tucked into the boiler room in the basement of the Police Department unused. This was $2,000 in this year's budget.
Is that a lease?
It is a lease, so they are now in the process of getting that machine back to the company. Additionally, I was just advised today that there were a couple of other issues that were discovered. We apparently have a Verizon bill where there are several modems that were being billed for between $20 and $50 a month that have no data that's being recorded. So that again is probably another $1,500 to $2,000 during the course of the year that we've spent that they believe is not necessary, so they're trying to unravel that right now too. Yet again, interim Chief Barrio has identified that we've been paying for more than a year on a service that we're no longer using. The service identified the location of our public safety vehicles in real time. This program was used for officer safety purposes, and this is $2,800 per year. So again, this is, if you've ever been in the dispatch center, you'll see that there's a large television affixed to the wall, and there used to be a real-time depiction of where all of our offices were, wherever they were in town. So God forbid if something happened and an officer went out of communication, we'd be able to determine where they are. That's been well over a year, if not closer to two years, that that service has not been utilized or having been operated. In fact, I'm advised that the last cruiser that we turned in was the last one that actually had the equipment in it that would correspond to the software for this program.
So we didn't remove the equipment?
We did not.
We traded the cruiser, so?
We did not remove the equipment, and we now no longer have any of the equipment. So this also is an issue that was about $2,800 for the year and has been at least a couple of years. More concern to me is the E-911 grants. These are grants that are formula-driven and available for the asking. You basically, based on call volume, population, it's a formula. You fill out an application, you get some money. It's not competitive. These are really just for the filling out and the asking. Over the past three years, we have either failed to apply for or have applied, been granted, but never actually submitted for the funds. I don't know which of those two scenarios is worse, that we didn't apply or that we applied and were given the money but never asked to have it sent to town. Over the past three years, that has cost a total loss to the taxpayers in excess of $100,000. This year alone, it's approximately $35,000. To make matters worse, it is clear that there were expenses incurred against these grants by the department, even though it should have been known that the funds were never even sought. Now, since I wrote this report last week and it was posted, Deputy Chief Barrio was able to draw on 30 years of goodwill that he's generated with the folks at E-911, and he hand-delivered a copy of an application to them last Thursday. And while we can't expect them to go back to prior fiscal years, his hope was that they would consider this fiscal year, given the fact that we still have five months left. Less than 24 hours turnaround, they responded back in writing, and they've granted the town the $35,000 for this year. So while we can't recoup the damage that's been done in the past, at least we've been able to capture this year's, so...
He drove all the way down to Brighton Thursday, didn't he? For us?
I think it was Taunton he went to, yeah.
I really appreciate that, and enough can't be said about somebody that helps us out like that.
I know he was happy to do it, because otherwise, he's scrambling, trying to find ways to cover the expenses that have already been made against that. To point, there was understandably a very important, badly needed expenditure for chairs in the telecommunications center, and it was several thousand dollars, probably $4,000 for the chairs, and it was intended that it would be paid for with the grant, but the grant didn't exist. So that was an amount of money that was going to have to be eaten by the general budget. Additionally, some of the trainings that took place earlier in the year were also expected to be hit against this grant, but without the grant there, they would have had to have been absorbed within the budget. So it was trending to be a pretty ugly budget. What this will do is allow us to pay those invoices and be able to repopulate the overtime line to a certain degree, so... There's no action requested, but I did want to just bring this to your attention, because it's things like this that are going to impact things, obviously, as we try to make our way to the end of '16, and even more so that will make '17 all the more difficult to try to cover. So it's not great news, it's just news.
And I think this is one of those items that I think that the working group will be able to address pretty quick. I think this might be one of the first things we'd probably talk about, a way to account for that, so that the visibility is there, so that we get it, you get it, the accountant has it, the Police Department has it, or any department that has grants.
Sure.
That even, the visibility of a grant schedule, so that everybody can see that, anybody that's got grants in their budget, the accountant can see it, it can be reported, and the Fincom can see that when they're trying to look at the budget as well, rather than to say, we've got an empty, we've got, if budgeted, a grant is revenue that's really never, gets seen, so a grant schedule would...
Absolutely.
Look into the Safety Vest grants for me, too. I know that was supposed to be a 50 percent reimbursement, and we appropriated that $15,000. Yeah, I think whatever grant, I mean, I'm sure that there's other departments that have smaller grants too that we can probably address. Without saying anybody's not doing their job, I think it's, this is an example of a means that communication can change the visibility of stuff, even though...
Certainly.
Madam Chair?
Please.
I'm not going to get into the gist here. I will just say that I totally appreciate the work product of our town administrator and interim Chief Barrio addressing concerns that have been going on for a long time. I won't address those, but their work product is just superior, and they've just gone above and beyond what we could expect from them, and on my behalf, and I hope, on behalf of the Board here and the people, they're just turning it around, and thank you very much for your extraordinary work over here.
Chief Barrio has just been a godsend to us.
He's been an all-star. Thank you, Gordon.
Moving along into project updates. The first one in Section A is municipal aggregation. For those in the audience, or those following along at home, there's a change in the law that allowed municipalities by a vote of the legislative body, be it the city council in a city or town meeting in a town, to vote to implement a program called municipal aggregation. What it allows is for every private meter, whether it's a residential meter or a commercial or industrial meter, for electricity, to have all of the load that's reflected on those private meters aggregating into one big bucket and creating an amount of energy that can be put out into the marketplace to try to bid and get a better rate than you might be able to get individually. Town meeting, I think to its great credit and to the leadership in the town that proposed it, has supported this, and I'm here to report that I put an RFP out on the street in the short time that I've been here for municipal aggregation. We've received two quotes, and they're under review. I'll have an update on what municipal aggregation is and what it means going forward. So basically, it'll be allowing us to put, again, the entire private electrical load or amount of electricity used out on the street to try to get a good bid. Everybody will automatically be enrolled in municipal aggregation, so your home, your business will automatically be enrolled. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to get two bills, it doesn't mean that you have to do anything. What will happen is you will see your regular bill and under the power section where you would normally see X dollars per kilowatt hour for demand, which is the actual electrons you're buying, you'll see the aggregation rate instead. So your bill will be the same, you'll just have the cheaper rate applied there. If you don't want to be involved, you would have to opt out. So it's automatic in, opt out. So if somebody says, regardless of whether it's going to save me money, I don't want to be involved in something that is going on through the town, that's my bill, my business, they have the ability to opt out. So once a consultant is picked, which should be within the next week, we'll be able to get before the Board for contracting, and they'll be able to roll the program out pretty quickly. Both of the companies that have bid have experience in Massachusetts in aggregation, one a greater degree, more of experience, but both are very good companies. So my hope is that we'll be able to get this rolled out, and sometime by late spring, be before the Department of Public Utilities for them to approve the plan, and then in early summer, be able to get out into the marketplace, get things all wrapped up, so by the time we get into fall next year and the weather starts to go and the rates usually spike, we'll be in a better place than we were in the past several years.
And just so folks know, I've been asking for this RFP to be done, I don't know, all last year, and it's one of the first projects. I asked Jim, and he got right to it. He got the RFP done for us, and it does, while the electricity rates aren't real high right now, it will have an effect on every customer over the long term. And I know Ashby went into an agreement about a year ago, I think, Lunenburg's into agreement, and they have realized, the homeowners have realized, good savings, so, not that you're tied into it, but you can always opt out, but I'm sure we'll have more of an explanation when we sign the contract. So, thank you again.
Certainly. And the way the consultants work is, there's a website that's dedicated specifically to the town, so if you have any questions, that'll be on all the literature you have. They have somebody available, business hours, a live person, but obviously voicemail and electronic support 24/7 if any questions come up. It's a pretty smooth operation. Most recently, in my last assignment, we rolled out municipal aggregation, and there have been savings realized there. So oftentimes, when we sit up here, we talk about how we're saving money, we're doing this, and we're going to save the taxpayers money, and the taxpayers never see that, when you get right down to it. You know, we just find another way to spend those seven cents that we just saved them. This is an opportunity where, you know, when they're balancing their budget every month at the kitchen table trying to pay bills, this is a way that actually gets down to that kitchen table level in their checkbook and saves them some money, so it's a good thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, I have a quick question. How will that affect people who have solar panels?
That'll be, Madam Chair, if I may. That'll be something that'll be addressed by the consultant when one is picked. It depends on what agreement you have, if you have solar, it depends on what your financial arrangement is with the solar company, because there are a variety of different models out there, so I'd hate to offer one answer right now, but instead say that they'll address those types of things once they get brought on. That's one of the pieces they have to speak to.
Okay. I don't want to interrupt, but are you guys cold? I'm freezing up here now. Do you mind if I just? Shivering over here. Sorry about that.
Madam Chair?
You had mentioned that this was a priority for yours, it had been approved now past town meeting, what town meeting, just for my indication?
Oh, town meeting approved it back in 2013, I think, didn't they?
So it was approved three years ago?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't, I'll try to come up to speed. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Chair, in this town meeting, we just needed to follow through and get the RFP out and move it forward, so...
And I can, without knowing what Andy was thinking at the time, I can say that a number of communities approved this at town meeting and held off on doing it, because the Attorney General's Office, the division that oversees this program, had held a couple of the earlier plans up, and they really went through pretty lengthy discovery at the DPU level at the hearings for those particular plans. So it may be that, and again, I don't know what Andy's thinking was, but it may be that he held off on going forward with it until the dust settled on those things. Okay. Section B, Charter Review. Back in 2013, the board appointed a Charter Review Committee. They met regularly and produced a written report. We need to discuss what steps there are moving forward. I understand that the committee was not appointed pursuant to the charter, but rather as a committee of the board. You can see the enclosed documents. What does that mean, if anything? So basically, there's a provision in the charter that calls out a mechanism to appoint a committee to review the charter. And it says that, once they've been appointed, they do their work, they generate a report, and the report then goes directly to town meeting. If you look at the documents that I enclosed, you'll see that unlike the charter provision, this was something that was done by the board, kind of as a, again, I don't know whose hand it was done, but it was done outside of that normal process. And it may be that we didn't have a moderator at the time or something. Do you remember what it was?
No, I think the Board of Selectmen at the time, I believe I might have been here, they were forming a committee for, to do the charter review as a special legislation instead of following the process that's outlined in the charter. And this was the second committee, actually, that they had formed. And the first committee had made recommendations, and then they formed a second committee. So it wasn't in conformance with 7-7.
And here's where it gets a little bit dicey, because while the charter says that once their report is done, they shall report to town meeting, the mission and notice of vacancy under which this committee was put together back in '13 says, "The Board of Selectmen hereby establishes a charter committee which shall review the Townsend Home Rule Charter and make report with recommendations to the town meeting concerning proposed amendments." So while it's not, well, it's clearly not a committee as contemplated under the charter, it's still, on its face, it still appears to suggest that, once their work is done, that it will be reported directly to a town meeting. I don't know how fresh the report is. I don't know if you know when the report was finalized?
It was finalized last fall, wasn't it, Don?
Yeah. I made the presentation to the board...
I want to say September, maybe. Yeah. And we haven't had any discussion, per se, on the individual changes at all, because, and I brought it up, but we wanted to wait for the third member to come on board, because we wanted to have a discussion with the Charter Review Committee itself, because there was a lot of things, I know, that we didn't understand that were proposed for changes. So I don't really know how anybody's feeling about it, but I think we should at least have a public hearing and discussion with the Charter Review Committee on the individual things. I know we received several emails and letters from employees asking questions about some of the changes as well. So I don't know if we want to put together a meeting to have kind of a, not a hearing, per se, but...
At least publicly vet the report?
Yeah. And go over all the changes and ask questions of the committee. And that'll help folks get used to whatever changes they're proposing before it goes to town meeting.
Yeah, I'm still a member of that committee, and it's mostly a cleanup. It wasn't really a major change of any other rules that are in the charter, just a cleanup and then a recommendation to clean up the bylaws, because both our current charter and a revised recommended charter don't match a lot of our bylaws. So that needs to be the next...
Madam Chairman?
Well, one of the...
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. One of the things that the employees, some of the employees and I had brought up is you're deleting several sections in there, I think six and seven. And one of them is, it makes the employees all at-will employees. So I know there was concern from a lot of employees about that. But I thought if we went over the specific changes and understood them...
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, Gordon.
No, it's all right. I just, I don't know if I'm accurate in this remembrance here, but I remember seeing in our mail that some of the people had resigned, they thought their mission was complete on that board here. Is that correct or not?
Yeah, I think Don and Sue...
Don and Sue.
Just trying to come up to speed, that's all.
I think Don and Sue are the only ones that resigned, right?
But they can still come and explain things to us, right?
I wasn't, I just was trying to come up to where we were at, actually, status quo, that's all. Thank you.
Do we want to reappoint them if they were?
We'd have to repost.
Oh, never mind.
So I guess we need to have a discussion about this.
Yeah. But there's no reason why they can't present to town meeting, use their work and, you know, talk to us, just understand the changes, because if we had questions. I think the charter's a very important document, and everybody should have their say or comments on it.
So would you like something scheduled at one of your future meetings? Try to feel the committee out as to when they have availability and...
That would be great.
Excellent. Great.
Maybe we can put it on the website that we're going to have it, in case folks have questions, they can email them in if they can't make it or...
Just one thing on that, since I did resign, the vice chairman took over, and the vice chair is Mike Brimlin.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Moving to subsection C, Karen Hill Public Records. I'm advised that the email records in question have been segregated into one electronic file. I will be reviewing each and flagging those that require redaction. I intend to see that Ms. Hill gets these records before your next meeting. I did spend a little bit of time talking with one of the employees just today, whose emails are being sought. And I did do my best to calm any concerns that might exist about who am I and what are my eyes going to see, and how am I going to be able to determine what is or isn't relevant under the request. The point I tried to leave the employee with is, it doesn't matter if we're talking about potatoes or airplanes. If it's litigation-related, it's withheld. If it's personnel, it's withheld. So the standard exemptions from a public records request are not specific to the subject matter, they're specific to the type of communication. And I did ensure the person that, before I had let anything loose, I would make certain to consult and give them the opportunity to speak to anything that I might have missed. It's really meant more as an effort of, you know, if after a meeting like tonight, I know that my family is already asleep at home, and it doesn't matter if I go right home or if I stay until midnight, I can dedicate the time to doing that segregation work, whereas having somebody who's an hourly employee, who's already somewhat overloaded, try to carve off that time is a little more difficult. So this is really just an effort at getting it done, because it's been sitting for too long.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next to subsection...
I'm sorry, Kelly?
I just have a question. We've talked a lot on the legal bills. Do you have an idea of how much this particular issue with Karen Hill is costing the town? And do you have any timeframe of when this might be resolved? Because this has cost a substantial amount of money. Were any of these questions regarding this included in that $7,400 that you included?
Go ahead.
I don't know what was included in that total. I can't tell you when it will be resolved, if ever. I mean, it's a matter of some dispute between a number of parties. So it's really for the parties to be able to determine when, if ever, it gets resolved.
Now, I assume some of that $7,400 had to do with you contacting council, finding out the legality of releasing some of the public records requests that we have had? I'm assuming, correct?
No.
Yeah, you could sit down. I mean, that's not really what we're talking about here.
Actually, no, because all you've heard accounted for are things that predate my employment.
The $7,400?
That went until, I want to say December. I was only here for a week of December when you take the holiday out.
Because when we look at the legal bills, the legal bill's not actually to give us the public records, it's investigating why we want the public records. And their public record, we can post them for the legal bill.
Well, yeah, when you ask for sensitive records, they have to review it. But to go back to your...
But every single one of them.
To go back to Kelly's question about the cost, Ms. Hill was charged, Andy Sheen prepared an estimate for her, and I think it was over $1,000. I don't remember the exact cost.
Twelve, $13,000. She gave us cash.
Yeah. And she actually paid for it, so...
Well, because of substantial labor involved. Usually our requests are single document requests.
So I think when we say the $7,400, we should actually have a breakdown on what it truly is.
Sure, I'll get it all highlighted after the meeting. I'll give it to you.
And Madam Chairman, if I could, to Steve's point, I can't speak to what council was asked about prior to my getting here, but I can tell you that I'm not asking counsel every time I need to go to the bathroom.
Right. And that's what would happen.
If there's something extraordinary that I've never experienced before, and I want to be cautious, then I'll do that.
Like I know the answer to your request, when you wanted to know about emails that were sent up to the police department and the dates of that, that went to town council on a number of occasions, but you...
I think we'll get away from the agenda here.
Again, that wasn't my hand.
Get away from an agenda.
That wasn't my hand.
Why do we want to say something when we all have to get away from the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I was talking to you.
Why is it, no, seriously, guys, why is it we have something to say, you guys shut it down? When you don't like what you want to hear?
Because it's not on the agenda, so no one would discuss it.
But everything's, you have to be on the agenda, and you shut it down.
I gave you a response to the items you wanted to...
Yeah, but everybody wants to be on the agenda. You guys got it down, when it's not what you want to hear.
If I may, one last attempt.
Please.
The issue with Ms. Jackson's request may have been sent to council, may have been sent repeatedly. Again, it predates my employment. When I got the request, I wasn't able to produce a document, but I was at least able to create an answer and provide it. So again, it's...
I know some of the questions had to do with releasing executive session minutes that are locked up, or various settlements that were going on with the town. So, you know, it was our right to make the request. Now, whether or not Mr. Sheen had to contact town council, isn't, per se, our fault if we asked for a document and he needed his, he needed permission to know if it was legal or not. As you said, you don't want documents that should not have been released to come. Now, I believe there was also an investigation regarding the release of some of the documents. Was that factored into the $7,400 or not?
I'm not certain what that means, but I'd be happy to talk to you about it after, if you help me understand what the question is.
Thank you.
Moving along. We then get to Section D, Policies. Chairwoman Smart and I have been working on the creation and/or revision of board policies for over a month now. I expect we'll have drafts of board and committee policies and financial policies available for the next meeting of the board for review and consideration. Again, I gathered from having done some research before applying that this is something that Carolyn particularly had been chasing. Again, this stuff isn't rocket science. And while I appreciate you saying, you know, what a wonderful job I'm doing, the RFP wasn't rocket science. Creation of policy isn't rocket science. Rock stuff is rocket science.
Rocket science.
Because it's rock.
Exactly. But...
It's still superior work products.
It is. It's just, it's really nice how you drafted together a set of general policies for the office, and he went through them and...
He was anticipating the needs.
Yeah.
You know, I appreciate that you're humble, but...
And that's one of the things that you identified when you were looking at our town, is the real need for it. So the biggest one that I've been asking about is financial policies. And I've been asking way back, you remember Cindy, on the finance committee, the town is operating without, across the board, set of financial policies. And that's something that I'm very passionate about. We do have, we are working on those as well.
And again, those are things that when, I mean, while they're helpful to have internally to guide how, whether it's departments that have grants and being certain that those things are tracked appropriately, they're very helpful internal documents. But when you get into a situation where you're going out for a significant capital bond, your bond ratings, you want to know, what are your policies like? And I read back over the past several prospectus, and we don't have a good answer for that. You know, we have, we follow the statute, or we have this document that has existed since 1986 that, let me see if I can find it, type of stuff. So having these formal policies in place, while great internally, are even better for us externally, because when the auditors come in and look, we don't get dinged. When the bond ratings, they just want to give us our grades, we get bonus points, so...
And it goes along with the best practices. I know you're a big fan, and that's why I worked so hard on capital planning, to get the bylaw. And that book of policies is actually one of the best practices. It's almost verbatim from the DOR. So to have those kinds of things in place do help you credit rating an awful lot.
I think we're in a better position to really start looking at policies as we're doing the best, reviewing how we actually do things. Having policies, one of my pushbacks on just coming up with a lot of policies is, if we're not going to follow them, it's a waste of time and it's a useless document. So I want it, working with, which I think we're, like I said, we're in a better position to look at, okay, how are we doing things? And we need to do them in a way that makes sense, as well as to actually write down these policies and how they affect Townsend. Looking at, just copying and changing the heading from one town to Townsend doesn't make the policy effective. So I think now we're in a better position that we can say, well, this certainly isn't working, and review where we need to be. And I think we've got a better team right now to move forward, to put those together, so...
Yeah, and I mean, the best practices, you know, they're pretty standard. They've kind of been looked at for all different communities. So a lot of the finance policies are pretty much in there.
And Madam Chairman, if I could, one of the other things that I was able to observe before coming and talking to you folks back in December is how the finance committee has appeared to ebb and flow over time in its level of involvement with the budget, either its creation or its management and administration over the course of the year. And I think it's important, as Cindy just said, to not just take boilerplate policies and try to superimpose them over the town, but that we create policies that fit, but even more than that, that we get buy-in, not just from the select board, but from the finance committee particularly, because there's a real role and responsibility for the finance committee. And I think everybody is better served when that role is understood clearly and it's documented in policy, and there are no questions about anybody's expectation about who's doing what and when, so...
Agreed completely. And to tie in the account...
And it takes a village. It takes a village, too.
Oh, yeah.
It's not just one, you know, one, this is what the policy should be. It's, okay, let's look at this, the team, this working group even.
The finance team.
Yep.
The last point I'll...
They called in the treasurer.
The last point I'll offer on that, and it's not in my written report, because it was late Friday afternoon, but I did speak with the folks through DLS regarding the Community Compact Grant. And I had a conference call with the folks from the Collins Institute at UMass Boston as one of the consultants that's on the list with DLS. Again, to the great credit of the board, Andy collaboratively getting the Community Compact Grant in place just last year. We have $20,000 for best practices and policy and modeling for forecasting. And we have a $15,000 grant for budget documentation and tools and structure going forward. So to go to Cindy's point, and I know this has been an issue that Cindy's been bird dogging since I've been here, is getting this thing on court. Now is a great time to be doing the policies concurrently with having this grant in place to actually do the infrastructure that the policies would be describing, so...
That's one of the things I was really excited about. And the budget, not only with the policies, but it's going to help taxpayers. I mean, obviously, you don't want to change things right away. People get shocked when they come up and there's a new budget document. But, you know, solely implementing their stuff is going to help for transparency purposes and questions at town meeting and, you know...
Yeah, the more transparent it is to the people working on it...
Yes, the more transparent it is to the taxpayer.
It is to the people. We can explain it much better when we know what we're looking at.
Yes, I agree.
And a lot of what we do is voodoo, when you think about it. I mean, Cindy and I talked just the other day about, people get really excited when they compare tax rates. And they may say that, you know, people's tax rate is $1.50, you know, lower than ours, so what are we doing wrong? But you need to have an understanding, and policies can inform this discussion, because regardless of what the tax rate is in any given year, we're going to get the same amount of money out of you, plus two and a half percent. Because it's a function of property value and tax rate. So if property values go up, your tax rate goes down, such that it still nets the same bucket of money, plus two and a half percent. Property values go down, tax rate goes up. So it's not as easy as it seems, as just looking and comparing tax rates. You've got to look at the whole picture. And I think the better we can do in explaining that to people, the better we're all served as we get to town meeting. And those discussions don't need to take place as much, because people understand them, so...
Agreed.
Agreed. It's nice that we, I like the two-pronged tactic, because we were lucky enough and thoughtful enough to get the compact money, it's a perfect time to put the two together, so we get more bang for the dollars, so...
And what will you do to that finance class? Luckily, you went to that finance class and learned about it. I think we were one of the first communities, actually.
We were number 17, 351.
Yeah, we were the first communities that got it, and...
And we're also, hopefully, he's got enough on his work plate, but the next level, we jump ahead of everyone else if we file for the next level of grants. So, we might want to put down our future here, take advantage of that, and take money.
The one last point on the financial picture is, and it's something that few communities have done, not a lot, but I think it's a worthwhile goal. Back when Steve Grossman was treasurer in the Commonwealth, he put basically the state's checkbook online. So, you could actually, when you talk about, it would be used the word transparency, and I think it gets overused to a degree and it starts losing some of its punch, but there's nothing more transparent than being able to scroll through the budget and actually see real time with the last warrant what's been paid, you know, what's been spent out of it. And there's, I don't have experience with Vadar, the current system that we're running in town, my experience is with other programs, but I think an end goal, that would be a really cool thing to do, would be able to actually get our system up online so people can see in real time, this is what we gave you when we voted at town meeting, and how are you doing at any given time, what's been spent and how and on what? So, just kind of a more long-term goal, but something I think that's a goal that should be pursued. Speaking of goals, miscellaneous updates, section A, goals and objectives. Chairwoman Smart and I have discussed the fact that it would be of service to all of us to get a discussion of goals and objectives on the table sooner than later. I know it's difficult to focus on such long-range ideas when we're in the position of having to deal with acute issues, but we need to be disciplined enough to do it. And under action requested, can we set aside some time to begin this? And I know that there is a document that exists, I know Carolyn, you and Jody were talking about it today, so maybe we take that document, get it on the table as at least a foundation to work from, and see what's been done off of it, tick those things off, and see what's left, and then build off of that, but...
Yeah, my first year here, it was me, Colin, and Sue, and we all had our own goals, and we did an affinity diagram, do you remember that?
I was going to ask if that's what it was.
Yeah, and we put together this spreadsheet, and I know we wanted to talk about it last year, but we wanted to wait for the new member.
Do we want to do that again?
Well, I thought maybe we could take what was approved and adopted, see what we have accomplished, see what you guys want to add, see what we think is more of a priority.
Do we have a copy of that? We can look at it in between?
Absolutely, Jody.
Send that out, and we can review.
Sure. We kind of prioritize things, you saw that.
Yeah, I remember, that was quite interesting to watch that process. You guys weren't too sure what Sue was doing.
Yeah, no, but it worked out well. You know, so I just thought we could see what has been done and add whatever you'd like and Steve Gordon would like to the list.
Absolutely. We started with that, I remember this, but I remember purposely we waited for you, Cindy.
Oh, thanks.
Well, no, but I think the whole goal is that we work as a team.
Yes, it doesn't help to do it without me.
And a lot of things we actually held off, because, you know, the next couple of years, hopefully...
Jim might have some priorities of his own, he'd like to see this all plus accomplished, add to it.
Yeah, so we'll set some time aside and do that.
Excellent. That's all I have on my formal report, but one other issue has come up since the posting, and I had the opportunity just today to get some clarification on, and I'd like to just advise the board and through the board, the public. Over the past several weeks, couple of weeks, there's been a member of the community that has expressed a concern to me about the possibility that the board or a member of the board through council, with council, had sought to have an investigation done of this private And I've made a couple of attempts since this was first brought to my attention to speak with the concerned citizen. I was very thankful that the person came in and met with me, and we did have a good conversation one day, but I've made a couple of attempts since then to reengage based on information that I had come to know after we had met the first time, but there didn't appear to be an interest in getting together anymore on the matter, so I think the person was concerned enough that the person publicly addressed the issue through social media over the past several days, tail end of last week, I believe. And inasmuch as the issue has been presented publicly, and I have information that I believe is relevant to it, but not having been able to speak to the person directly about it, I'm really kind of boxed into being in a position to have to address it through this forum. So, while I wasn't involved, it predates my involvement here by a couple of weeks. Town council was involved, and in that regard, even though a member of the board is also alleged to have been involved, I've not chosen to reach out to the member of the board, because if there's a belief that this person's involved, then there's going to be an automatic discounting of this person's saying that that was true or not true. So, I've tried to stay away from that and instead speak with council. So, I do have this memorandum I'd like to read into the record, and it'll become part of the public record. It is addressed to me, it's today, and it's regarding police investigation. And it says, "Dear Mr. Kreidler, please accept this correspondence as a status report with respect to my involvement in the police department concerning the potential release of confidential employee information. In early December 2015, I received a telephone call from attorney Catherine O'Leary complaining, among other things, that confidential information concerning her client, an employee of the town of Townsend, had been released in a public manner. On the basis of the information received, release of the information likely came from a police source. On December 3, 2015, I, along with Ms. Smart, met with interim police chief Robert Demora and advised him that confidential information concerning one of his employees had been publicly disclosed. I instructed the interim chief to make inquiry of police personnel with respect to the unlawful disclosure. At no time during the meeting of December 2015 or any time thereafter did I or Ms. Smart instruct the interim chief to make any inquiry of any potential civilian witness. The interim chief never reported the results of the inquiry of police personnel that had been directed. If you need further information, please let me know. Very truly yours, David C. Jenkins, attorney at Copeland Page." So, I just wanted that to get out, that this is the account of the attorney who is alleged to have been involved in the direction of the Townsend Police Department through the person of the chief to investigate a private individual. His position, as it says in this letter, is that that never happened. That's all I have.
So, 4.2, border selectmen's announcement, updates, and reports. Do you have anything, Cindy?
Can I steal your thunder and as the assistant talker? And remind people that there's an election?
Go ahead, you can steal my thunder. I prefer it anyway.
Okay. I think it would be appropriate for you to say it, but the presidential primary is next Tuesday. What are the hours for the poll?
Seven to...
Seven AM to 8 PM?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Supposed to be?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so get out there. I think we're, I'm going to be assisting, but we're going to test the ballots tomorrow. I've never done that, but I'm going to participate, test the ballots, make sure they work tomorrow morning.
It's been kind of confusing with the state. We actually had to get new ballots issued because the other ones ran, and, but we had an election worker training today. The elections division came out and we invited the other communities, and there was, I don't know, between 60 and 80 people here. It went really well, until we couldn't figure out how to operate the microphone. I had to call Joe, and he came in, but other than that, it went good, so... Was that all you have?
Uh, that's all, yeah.
I just have two things for updates. The first is, several months ago, I think it was just you, me, Carolyn, but you had asked me to work with a group of town agencies to facilitate the, what's this building over here called?
Municipal garage.
Yes, and I received a call just the other night from our emergency management director, Shirley Coyle, and she was going away on vacation, and she just wanted me to tell the board and the community out there that herself, Chief Boynton, and the folks from the senior center have been working together, and she was just thrilled about how this building over here now is being shared by all the different agencies. The seniors have their van, and they're now sort of starting with the time. Emergency management now has, in this day and age where, you know, we're trying to plan for crises, this now has a proper place to store their equipment on trailers in people's basements, and then the fire chief has been involved to do the transition. But she did want me to mention that Mark McCurry, our facilities manager, has just been the glue there to make sure everyone had a fair shake in that building and that they're all working together. So, I think the citizens are served well by a building that's being properly used by everybody now, so she asked me to tell the board that and the people that, so...
So, we have team over there, we have facilities over there, we have the council on aging van over there?
Right, and the problem with that is, it used to be up at the highway department, but because it's a diesel, there was no place to put it inside. So, now, the seniors now, we can guarantee them that they're going to have transportation and the vehicle will last longer, so it's just, you know, all the departments working together, just it's refreshing, and she took the time to call me, so I thought I'd give you an update as the chairman, but also to the citizens that this building is being properly used.
Good, and I think we had the prisoners coming, it used to be white, and several years ago, we had the middlesex sheriff's program come out and they painted it for us, but we signed a contract, I believe, this fall...
Yes.
To have it repainted in the spring, so I know I've had a lot of people voice their unhappiness with the backside of it. It's not looking so good, but that'll be painted in the spring.
But it's being used, so that's a great thing.
Yes, it is.
And then the last thing is, my fellow board members saw it because you were all busy, and asked me on the sixth to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor, and I'm going to tell you right out front here, not being cute, you're going to have to fight me to take this away from me in the future, because I just got so much out of that day, and I was so impressed about, you know, just everyone in that place, and it was for Eagle Scout Andrew Kimbar, and Tom Witty was there, who had put hundreds of hours into helping this person achieve, and as his project, he went out and built for a local person who was involved helping other people in our town who has a disease now, and he put this in his house, so it was all about a community come-together quality, and I'm telling you, welcome to come to me for the next, come with me to the next Eagle Scout, but I'm going to every one of them. I was, I got so much out of it, and I was so impressed by the people there, and talking about public service, and to Andrew and his family, you should be so proud of what you've done for our community, so thank you for calling me and going.
Thank you.
So, I thought I was being a team player and stepping up, but I actually got a lot out of it, so, again, to the whole community there. The other thing I didn't understand, I'd never been to one before, is that how many people have to get involved to make that happen? And there must have been 10, maybe 10 or so past Eagle Scouts, some grown men now who all come back, and I tell you, if you're out there and you see they're going to have that, you should go. You really will get something out of it. It's something that's positive in this day and age, and so thank you for letting me go, folks, all right?
Yeah, we've had a lot of great projects accomplished by Eagle Scouts.
It just was totally motivating, I'm telling you, so thanks for calling me into it, but I'm going in the future.
Okay, good. So, I didn't have too much. I've had a pretty hectic, stressful few weeks, but there was something, and I didn't bring it with me, but talking about the compact program, how we get additional points when we apply for future grants, and maybe you know, Jim, the Baker administration is rolling out the Operation Neat Streets initiative, and our highway superintendent actually has to go to the classes and become certified, and then we can apply for them, and because we have the compact, we're going to be getting it. He's actually going to that training next week, and it might help us possibly with design. I know a lot of folks have talked about sidewalks and maybe cleaning up our downtown a little bit and maybe some of the road situation. I didn't know if you know too much about that program.
I don't. It's relatively new, but I know that Ed's going to get the training, and he'll be able to let us know what the next step is.
And I had brought it upstairs, and of course...
And Madam Chairman, I do remember Lieutenant Governor, which was sitting right here, did tell us that we go ahead of, like lots of other people, because we are one of the first to do that, so that'd be awesome.
So, that's great, and I just wanted to thank Ed for going out there and taking the classes to get certified so we can apply for that. That's really going to help us in the future.
It's quite pretty educational. I use a roads scull, and I was going to be something else.
State roads scull. Okay, so 4.3, meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve and release the meeting minutes. If you want to take it in two different motions, one for the regular and one for the executive?
Okay, make a motion that we approve and release the, or approve the minutes from the regular session on 12/15, 15, and 12/30, 15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And make a motion that we release and prove, approve and release, or approve to release executive session meeting minutes for 12/9, 15, and 12/15, 15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're down to 4.4.
Make a motion that we review and sign payroll and bill's payable warrant out of session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, all right, folks, we're on to the executive sessions. Do you want to make a motion to enter?
Yes, make a motion that we enter executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A, 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, public records law request.
And?
And general law, chapter 30A, section 21A, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Folks, we may be taking...
For... Apps may propose supervisory unit in the IAFF firefighter EMT proposed contract amendment.
And to adjourn directly from executive?
And to adjourn directly from executive session.
Second.
And I would like to declare that it would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body.
I do have one question before we, there was something, we, there was something earlier tonight that we said we were going to discuss in executive...
The public records request, that's the first of the...
Oh, okay, so that's covered, okay. I wasn't sure if that was meeting the right enough...
It is.